Good evening, everyone. Please come to order. I call to order the meeting of the Glendale City Council for July 29, 2025. May we have roll call?
Councilmembers Asaturian.
Here.
Brotman, Garpetian, Kasakian.
Here.
And Mayor Najarian.
Here. Will you all please rise and join me in our flag salute? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And today, we are honored to have Senior Pastor Reverend Dr. Angela Galanis Price from the First United Methodist Church to give us the invocation.
Thank you. It's an honor for me to be here. Let us pray. God of great love, we gather today as leaders and members of Glendale community, seeking your divine presence and guidance. We ask for your wisdom to conduct this meeting with integrity, fairness, and a deep commitment to the well-being of all persons. We bring before you the social issues that weigh on our hearts, the struggles of those experiencing homelessness, the challenges faced by families for food and security, and the need for greater understanding and compassion among all people. Inspire us, O great God, to create solutions that uplift and support every person, ensuring that Glendale is a city where everyone is valued and has the opportunity to thrive. We also lift up those affected by the recent immigration raids. God, we cry out for your compassion and justice to prevail. We pray for comfort for families separated and the children who are left with no parents. We need your support and peace for all who are living in fear. Guide us as a city to respond with empathy and to uphold the dignity of every person. May our discussions and decisions today reflect a spirit of compassion and a genuine desire to serve the greater good of Glendale. Bless our city, bless our leaders, and bless all who call this community home. In God's holy name, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Agenda for the July 29, 2025 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on July 24, 2025, on a bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And the next item?
Item three is presentations and appointments. There will be no city council meeting on August 5, 2025. The next regular council meeting and housing meeting will be on August 9, 2025. Item number B is proclaiming.
Mr. Clerk, just a moment. So, this may be a misprint, but I show an item 2D. Do you, does anyone else have that?
It's a misprint.
It's a misprint.
Correct.
Okay, so.
It's pulled.
August 12. This isn't action by the mayor or by council. This is just a clerical error to place it on. Okay, you were saying you're on 3B, Mr. Clerk.
Proclaiming July 30, 2025 as Korean Comfort Woman Day.
Thank you. And we have representatives from the Korea Glendale Sister City Association and the Korean American Federation of North Los Angeles, the Hwarang Youth Foundation, and the Comfort Women Action for Redress and Education. And it's my pleasure, it's council's pleasure, to announce that the city of Glendale proclaims July 30, 2025 as Korean Comfort Day in remembrance of the women and girls who suffered under the Japanese, then Imperial Army wartime system. Glendale honors their memory through continued education, advocacy, and the city's longstanding commitment to human rights and historical recognition. I am asking my colleague, Councilmember Asaturian, to present these documents and proclamations to members of the aforementioned community groups. And you are welcome to come forward if you'd like and address council, the city, and anyone who decides to tune in. Councilmember Asaturian? So please come forward.
Honorable Mayor Ara Najinian and city council members, on behalf of the Korean America Federation of North Los Angeles, Korea Glendale Sister City Association, Comfort Action for Redress and Education, and Hwarang Youth Foundation, we extend our sincere gratitude for the city of Glendale, continued proclaiming of Korean Comfort Woman Day each year. As we prepare for the 14-annual Korean Comfort Woman Day commemoration of ceremony, we deeply appreciate unwavering sports acenology this vital history day. This year, holding particular significations, and we also celebrate the anniversary of liberation and poignant reminder of the endure filing for the freedom and justice that resonates deeply within our community. In conjunction with the commemoration, we are honored to announce the art exhibit at the Central Library. We would be deeply honored by your presence at its opening ceremony on August 16. In this exhibit aimed to further education to public, forced deeper reflection on the Comfort Woman issue through the powerful medium of art. Your commitment to remembering this victim and survivor of military sexual slavery during World War II in value is not only honor their memory, but also serve as a powerful testimony, testament of Glendale dedication to human right, historical true, and prevent of the future Etro City. We are looking forward to continuing our strong partnership with the city of Glendale. We are committed to working together to foster community development and enhance culture exchange, ensure our share value contribute to our vibrant and exclusive city of our residents. Thank you again for profound understanding, steadfast support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then also our youth.
Please, please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening. Today, I stand before you to talk about a painful, often overlooked chapter of our history, the story of the Comfort Women of Korea. During World War II, under Japan's colonial rule of Korea, an estimated amount of 50,000 to 200,000 women, many of them just teenagers, were forced into sexual slavery by the Japanese military. They were told they'd be working in factories, or that they'd be nurses, but instead, they were taken to military-run comfort stations across Asia and the Pacific, where they were subjected to daily sexual violence and unimaginable cruelty. These women came to be known as Comfort Woman, a term that tragically masks the brutality they endured. For decades after the war, their suffering was ignored, silenced by stigma, shame, and political denial. Many survivors kept their stories hidden for most of their lives, living in silence and pain. It wasn't until the 1990s that some brave Korean women stepped up and spoke out publicly, not for revenge, but for truth, justice, and recognition. As the summit chairperson of the Hwarang Youth Foundation, I believe it is imperative that we, as the next generation, recognize these injustices and commit ourselves to the pursuit of truth. Because history that is not acknowledged is history that risks being repeated. The issue of Comfort Woman is not just a Korean or Japanese issue, it's a human rights issue. It speaks for the treatment of women during conflict, the long-term scars of colonialism, and the global fight for dignity and justice. When we teach this history honestly, we give a voice to those who are silenced and those, and we shine a light on the darker corners of the past. The next generation must know these stories, not to pass on bitterness, but to carry forward the lessons. These women showed incredible courage, not just in surviving, but in speaking up, demanding an apology, and in demand for dignity. This courage should inspire us all. Their fight for recognition is still ongoing. Some governments deny the scale or nature of what had happened. That is why remembering and acknowledging is a moral responsibility. When we choose to listen and learn, we choose to honor their pain with truth. Thank you to the leaders of Glendale for dedicating yourselves and recognizing these issues. Together, we are stepping toward a more compassionate and connected world. Let us not turn away from this difficult history. Let us teach it, speak it, and remember it, so that no woman anywhere in the world ever has to endure such war again. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the CARE or the Sister Cities? Were you from the Sister Cities Association, sir? Are we from North? Yes, yes, we're gonna, council member is gonna.
My name is Jong Mi Park. I'm a mother of Lauren Huang. I'm basically, we are here be on behalf of Executive Director of CARE. So she just, she's in Korea, so she asked us just to be here, show our appreciation to your support. So basically, I'm just, you know, here to show our appreciation.
Thank you. Well, thank you for attending. It's wonderful to have you here. Okay. Would you like to speak? Yes.
I want to welcome all of you here, but also want to note that I take immense pride in Glendale being one of the few cities in the world that has the Comfort Women statue. I had the honor of visiting Korea in October along with our city manager, Rubik Galanian, where we actually visited some of the Comfort Women statues in Korea. I have said this time and again, every year during this time and any time the opportunity affords me to do so, but I also had the opportunity to visit Japan recently, and this conversation obviously came up as part of that. It is absolutely no secret where my position stands on this issue. I, not just as a woman, but as a leader, I think it requires all of us to not just sit there silently or play in diplomatic ways when the truth is being questioned. And I will say that as an Armenian-American and as a, as someone that has had her grandmother and great-grandmother be a survivor of the Armenian genocide, I think one of my points made was, if I allowed for this conversation or debate to continue, it would be the same thing as I know that somewhere during the same time, someone is sitting around at a different table trying to deny the story of my great-grandmother. So I think this is personal, and I think it requires all of us to take a stand. My hope is that, aside from the Comfort Women statue that we have, I would like to ask staff if we can perhaps modernize it with some sort of QR code that sits next to the Comfort Women's, which leads to a website where people can learn more about the history and some of our Korean organizations. And I'm happy to say that we have our first Sister Cities Committee meeting scheduled for August 7. And of course, we're going to have representatives there. And my hope is that that committee will also play a role in not just forging relationships and stronger ties with our sister cities around the world, but how we can utilize our public spaces to further educate and bring people together around different cultures. So thank you for being here.
And while Councilmember Asaturian makes her way down to present the certificate, I'll just say that, you know, there's a famous quote that there's no such thing as a bad peace or a good war. Oftentimes, in wartime, we see terrible atrocities committed against the most vulnerable people and members of our community. And I'm glad that we're reaffirming our commitment to remembering the past with honesty and compassion and standing up for, and standing up actually against violence that's committed, against women specifically, targeting women, whether it's in wartime, peacetime, or in silence. So the courage of those who've come forward to speak about the things that happened to them fuels our commitment to ensuring justice and that these types of atrocities are not repeated. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what is next, Mr. Clerk?
Next item is consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor and councilmembers, I don't have any cards for this item or calls.
That's great. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent. Mayor and colleagues, I do want to make a note, I don't want to pull any of the items, but on one or two of the items, I had noted to staff during the briefing that as routine, we should be looking at whether it's the postcards that are going to be sent out for any of the projects that are coming up, if that's the best way to do them, if there's modern ways to go about doing them, or how we can save additional funds. So just wanted to put that in record. With that, I move the consent.
Okay, and I would just, I don't want to pull anything. I'd like to make a comment on item 4E, the Glorieta Park Field Light Replacement Project. I hope that the specifications are calling for a parabolic lighting system with appropriate shielding, directing the lights only onto the field, and to eliminate some of the light pollution that spills into the neighborhoods. So there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asaturian.
Yes.
Brotman, Garpetian, Kasakian.
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is item number five, city council and staff comments.
Okay, Mr. Kasakian.
It's good to be back.
Thank you. Councilmember Asaturian.
I just want to say thank you to Hike for Our Heroes and to our city staff. This last weekend was the Vartavar Water Festival. I don't know what's happening with my voice, but I know that the whole thing was organized by four or five individuals, bringing out, I would assume, over 10,000 people to Verdugo Park. My hope is that we can continue to support these kinds of events as a city. Just to see all these families gather in such joy, I think is an investment worth making in. I have, I know there were some concerns with some of the fees that the organizers had to pay for the city. I have asked them to submit it to the council, and I know that there's going to be an additional report that's supposed to be coming to council and for us to take into consideration how we can further support events like this that bring not just joy and point of connection for our communities, but for me at least, I see it as a source for mental health support, and as well as our small businesses that tend to be vendors at these events. So thank you to Hike for Our Heroes and everyone that participated.
Thank you. It was good mental health support. I can't tell you how good I felt when I squirted Councilmember Asaturian, but not to be outdone, she got one of the electronic new-fangled squirt machines and gave me one right between the eyes, so I think we both felt better afterwards. I do want to thank our police department, however. This is a unique situation where they're walking around, being professional, and you've got people, myself included, walking up to them and squirting them with a squirt gun. Several of the officers, upon their first squirt, were rather taken back, but I think they, in the context of the festival and the good vibes, they were very good sports about it. So I do want to tip my hat to them for going along with all the good fun. It was really a good event. Folks, Metro will begin early construction activities in Glendale for the North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project. So starting Monday, August 4, that's this Monday, crews will begin utility exploration at the Broadway and Verdugo Road intersection. This work involves potholing. Potholing means boring small holes into the roadway or sidewalk to locate the underground utilities, the cables, the gas lines, water lines, sewer lines, electric lines, et cetera. Then on Friday, August 8, similar work will start along Glen Oaks Boulevard between Alameda Avenue and Central Avenue. This phase is expected to last approximately one month, but work will not take place across the entire stretch simultaneously. Work hours are Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Traffic impact will be one lane reduction, but we will have one lane open at all times while the construction crews are working. Sidewalks, crosswalks, and business access will be maintained. We appreciate your patience during this important phase of the project. Thank you. Mr. Galanian, anything from staff or the manager's office? Thank you. Okay. Then let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item is number six, community event announcements, three-minute portion. Mayor and councilmembers, I do not have any cards for this portion.
Very good. Let's roll on.
Item number seven, first period of oral communication. Members of the public may address the council on agenda items or non-agenda items within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. If a speaker addresses the council on an agenda item during the first period of oral communications, they may not speak again when the agenda item is called. A speaker who addresses the council on non-agenda items during their first period of oral communications may not speak during the second period of oral communications. Mayor, I do have, I believe, three cards.
Please call them forward.
First one would be Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. I have taken the freedom to see if you could, to pass along a document that is a suggested resolution for the city council to take up. The reason for this resolution is that we have a moral hazard that needs correction. The city council and roughly 1,600 members of the salaried workforce in Glendale have a vested interest in Calpers. But Calpers has a significant moral hazard, and that is that Calpers is an investor in a company that has denied the health care of millions of people, United Healthcare. You may remember United Healthcare from back in January, I think his, the CEO was assassinated. This very same company has a lawsuit by Calpers with regard to insider trading. It has lawsuits pending from the Department of Justice with regard to additional investigations of anti-competitive behavior and upcoating Medicare charges. The problem that I have and that you should have with this particular investment by Calpers is that no one should be benefiting from the profits of this particular company, United Healthcare, while at the same time is a company that is denying the health care to millions of people. I think that it is morally just for us to expect that the investments by Calpers be aligned with your values with regard to transparency and a moral justification with the way we make our investments. This resolution is not about financial recklessness, but it's about the misconduct of a company from whom we are benefiting from. And I think that the resolution to divest should be followed up by the city council. And I'm also suggesting that all of the five city employee associations, the Glendale Firefighters Association, the Glendale Police Officers Association, the Glendale Management Association, the Glendale City Employee Associations, and the IBW, all should join the city council in appealing to the Calpers Board to divest itself from a company that is egregiously immoral and whose actions are proudly illegal. We should not be benefiting from profits of these individuals or a company such as this that is the utmost egregious, immoral company that I think we have in the United States. So I appeal to you to look at this particular resolution and adopt it soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one is Tony Passarella.
No, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say thank you, Mr. Milano. I'll definitely take a look at this document, which I just saw right here. I apologize, I'm still catching up with emails, and I'll take this into consideration. Thank you.
Tony, let me load this up for you. Tony, give me a second, I'm trying to get the volume.
Your town yet? Around the world, there are cheap, quick, and fun way to get around. Maybe a little too fun for some people, as Stephen Fabian explains, plenty of trips to the ER and worse are being blamed on e-scooters.
They fly down the street at speeds sometimes in excess of 50 miles per hour. They run red lights and can be a source of chaos on crowded city streets. Watch what happens to this woman as she tries to exit a bus. She's mowed down by a guy on an e-
immoral and whose actions are proudly illegal. We should not be benefiting from profits of these individuals or a company such as this that is the utmost egregious, immoral company that I think we have in the United States. So I appeal to you to look at this particular resolution and adopt it soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one is Tony Passarella.
No, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, thank you, Mr. Milano. I'll definitely take a look at this document which I just saw right here. I apologize, I'm still catching up with emails, and I'll take this into consideration. Thank you.
Tony, let me load this up for you. Tony, give me a second, I'm trying to get the volume.
Around the world, they're a cheap, quick, and fun way to get around. Maybe a little too fun for some people, as Stephen Fabian explains, plenty of trips to the ER and worse are being blamed on e-scooters.
They fly down the street at speeds sometimes in excess of 50 miles per hour. They run red lights and can be a source of chaos on crowded city streets. Watch what happens to this woman as she tries to exit a bus. She's mowed down by a guy on an electric scooter.
She returned here to her husband's hometown.
Earlier this month, actress Lisa Baines, best known for playing Ben Affleck's mother-in-law in the movie Gone Girl, was killed while crossing Amsterdam Avenue on New York's Upper West Side. A scooter ran a red light and smashed into the actress. It happened right here. Police say the suspect fled the scene and remains at large. Here's Les Trent.
Many critics say e-scooters like this are becoming a dangerous nuisance on congested streets across the nation. So how much havoc are they causing? To find out, we hit the streets of New York City to see for ourselves.
In a matter of minutes, we saw scooters blowing through red lights.
You just ran right through a red light. Hut? You just went right through a red light.
That's fine.
We watched as electric scooters bobbed and weaved in and out of traffic.
I almost got killed twice.
Susan Dressner says she's scared to walk down the street.
You have the electric bikes, you have scooters, and they're going on the sidewalks now.
You're not supposed to be on the sidewalk.
If they run into me, I'm a goner.
The injuries can be catastrophic.
Ankle fractures, hip fractures, shoulders, the bone here, the humerus, skull fractures. We've had neck injuries.
Dr. Daniel Murphy runs the emergency room at St. Barnabas Hospital.
I've worn this body over and over and over again for the last two months. I've abused the email system, probably sent you up, up to 30 emails. If you paid any attention at all to anything that I'm saying to you, this should be a no-brainer. So what I'm asking for is a moratorium to take this off the agenda until we can get some safe infrastructure in place. There's no need, your own survey showed there's no need, there's no public support for it. I've showed you the fires, I've showed you the injuries, people in hospital beds, all things considered, these are not green, I read the citations to you. So at the end of the day, if you choose, this is on the agenda, and you vote yes on it, you're basically, it's slapping the voters in the face, the seniors and the disabled trying to navigate the sidewalks. And I've already showed you many, many pictures of e-bikes and e-scooters on the sidewalks. I'm asking for a moratorium, please.
Mayor and councilmembers, and the last card is Denise Maximov or Dennis Maximov? Dennis, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. I'm really nervous since the first time for me. My name is Dennis Maximov. As a city of Glendale, knows me as a no-name shawarma. It's a sidewalk vendor on the Glen Oaks and Western. Few weeks, we start, I don't know how to explain, city edited by the parking enforcement of, over, over the time on the zone, two hours limit. I understand we, it's a different of the, we, has a pyramid of the city of Glendale, we has a business certificate. We already worked with the city of Glendale since 2019, and also, everyone that knows us, we participate any holidays of the city and police station, and basically, we really clear, keep clean of the place. So we has a trash can, we clean, even clean, clear of the sidewalk, we has, never has an issue with the neighbors. I know it's, we speak about the wise reason enforcement start giving us tickets, it's give us explanation, it's somebody complained, the food trucks staying overtime. We ask you, think about it, give us, because we already play, pay the permits and especially for this place. Also, if, this is a different situation between parking enforcement and the city of Glendale, we ask if we give us any additional permits to reserve this place and stay there and start of the business. Why we cannot move of this place, because the people knows we're already like five years over there, and we can get to lose the business. Second, especially for us as a no-name shawarma, we has a ticket of oversized vehicle. This is a fully requirement food truck approved by the city and specially made it by commissary. And there is no validation of the oversized, but we has two weeks oversized parking tickets. Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers, that was the last card, and there are no callers.
Okay, that will conclude the first period of oral communications. What is the next item?
Next item is eight, Adoption of Ordinance, eight A, Fire Department, Regarding Adoption of an Ordinance, Adopting the 2025 Local Responsibility Area Fire Hazard, Severity Zone Maps As Recommended By The California State Fire Marshal.
Mr. Galanian?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. This item was introduced by Councilmember Asadurian on July 15th. So it's a request for adoption. Chief Brooks is available if you have any questions. We don't have a presentation.
Okay. Are there any cards available or requests to speak?
Mayor, there are no cards for this item or callers.
Okay. Councilmembers?
Happy to move the item.
I think I'll be seconding or moving a lot of items, given our makeup today, so I'll second.
Well, we've got to stay on our toes. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadurian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Kasakian? Yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Would be nine action items, nine eight Public Works, Regarding Request for Proposal For The Design-Built Of The Grand View Library Roofing And Solar Project. One is Resolution Authorizing The Director Of Public Works Or His Designee To Issue A Request For Proposal Using The Design-Built Alternative Project Delivery Method For The Grand View Library Roofing And Solar Project.
Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. Ordinarily, we don't see councils' approval for issuance of RFPs for projects of this magnitude. However, this is a alternative project delivery method, hence requiring approval by council before we move forward. This RFP is for the design-build of a membrane-type overlay on the existing roof with a photovoltaic energy generation system, in other words, a solar system, at the Grand View Library. The membrane comes with a 30-year warranty. The design-build project has the benefit of having a single firm responsible for both the design and construction, including improved accountability, speed, and cost control. The Grand View Library's roof has surpassed its end-of-life and been experiencing water leaks after each major rain event. So we are requesting your approval of the resolution to issue a request for proposal for this work. If you have any questions, staff from Public Works are available.
Thank you for summarizing the concerns and the issues before us. Are there any speaker cards on this item?
There is, there is a caller on the line, it's Mr. Mohill. Mike Mohill, you have three minutes, Mike, go ahead.
Good evening, councilmembers, my name is Mike Mohill. We have a finance problem in the city. We're in the red, and I think we need to think about our, our libraries. You know, that's a luxury today. Most people, they do, they use their, their phone, do Google search. I think we should have put a moratorium on all libraries and closed them down except for the main library and on Central, at the library, at Central Park, excuse me, and up there in Mont, and Locker Center, on Locker Center Avenue. The two, those I believe are the only two major ones. If someone knows there's another library that has high usage, I'm okay with that. But how much usage does the Grand View Library have? That we're going to spend money on fixing this thing? It's serious, you know? I, I, is it highly used, this Grand View? I don't know. I'm sure the people who live in the neighborhood would love it. But you know, I love a lot of things, but we don't have the money. So we have to think about closing some, some libraries down that are, that are low usage. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another card, I understand?
Yes, I do have one more card, and this is Beth Brooks. Beth, you have three minutes.
I just have a question, when the RFP comes back and if it involves solar energy, because I know that you take profits or revenue, you know, portion of what the GWP gets and you put it into the general fund, would this come from those profits? Because it's, would this be considered electricity-related? Because it would be a solar project, so the funds that would go into the, would that come from profits from, from the GWP? Because my, you know, long-term goal would be, wouldn't it be great to give rebates to people who can barely afford their electric bills? And would this money be going from profits from the GWP if it involves solar energy? That's my question, you know? Where would the money come from? Would it involve that money? Because I do believe that it would be great to take any extra money and give it as rebates. So that's, that's my question. Thank you.
Would you like to address that question, Mr.?
Sure. Mayor Najarian, and the solar system that'll be installed on the roof of Grand View Library will benefit the library itself. It will not be put back into the grid of the GWP system. So it's part of the project. When we get the RFPs back, we'll decide which, which fund will, will pay for that installation.
Okay.
And there's been a, Mr. Mayor, and there's been a financial assessment as to the cost-benefit, I'm sure of this, and this is the reason why we're doing this, in order to cut some of the expenses that we incur. And I know that one of the callers was asking about the value of having that library. I would like to point out, for anyone listening, who is perhaps wanting to support such a view that we should close down that library. That library exists in a pretty densely populated part of the city, a lot of apartments, a lot of families living around there. More significantly, it's right across the street from one of our elementary schools, which is very, has a very high student population, I think nearing almost 800 students, if not more, which for anyone who knows anything about schools will tell you that it is a significant size. And those students benefit directly from that library, because I don't believe Jefferson, the campus has its own library because of that relationship that we have, just as we do at the Pacific Edison Campus, where there's a lot of joint-use facilities. And also, it's a place that adults can utilize as well. You can order library books from any of our branches and pick them up at the location that's closest to you. So it is a used library, even if some of the individuals who spoke out on it may not be familiar with it. I'd suggest perhaps going to those communities, going to those neighborhoods before making assumptions, and understanding what the challenges that we're facing and the services we're trying to provide. I'll make the motion to, I'll make the motion to adopt this.
And I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadurian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Kasakian? Yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is item B, Glendale Water And Power, Regarding Contract With Aviva Software LLC For Continued Support And Expansion Of Glendale Water And Power Department's PI Historian System. One, Resolution Dispensing With Competitive Bidding On Authorizing The City Manager Or His Designee To Enter Into And Execute An Agreement With Aviva Software LLC For A Total Term Of Six Years In The Not-To-Exceed Amount Of $904,781 For The Initial Three-Year Term For Continued Support And Expansion Of Glendale Water And Power Department's PI Historian System. Funding For The Second Three-Year Renewal Term Will Be Requested As Part Of The City's Annual Budget Process.
Well, I'm wondering if we need a report. Which one of you two, Mr. Mellon or Mr. Galanian, could do this in one minute?
I can do it in one minute.
Okay, I recognize the city manager.
For the, for the record, just to clarify, this is called a PI system, and you're probably wondering, what's a PI system? It's a real-time data historian that integrates with various systems such as SCADA. It captures real-time data, stores it, and makes it accessible through various tools, with the benefits that include real-time visibility, event and alarm management, integration, integration with analytics, scalability, and high-performance storage. I won't go through the background, but essentially, a few months ago, sorry, in March of 2021, Aviva acquired OSI Soft, which was the previous vendor, and hence we need to renew the contract with them. The system is deeply embedded with GWP's operation, and it will be the historian for the Shoal Canyon Biogas and Grayson Power Plant. And Aviva is the exclusive provider of the software, hence the request to dispense with competitive bidding.
Well done, Mr. Galanian. Are there any cards on this item?
Mayor, we do not have cards for this item or callers.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
And I will second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asadurian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Kasakian? Yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item C, Community Development, Regarding Alex Theater Technology Refresh Network Infrastructure And Security Systems Upgrade. Motion Authorizing To Process An Amendment To The Competitively Bid Voice And Data Network Cabling Contract With WILSYS Communications To Increase The Amount By $45,000 For A New Not-To-Exceed Contract Amount Of $844,000. Resolution Of Appropriation In The Amount Of $110,000.
Mr. Galanian, can you meet your performance a few moments ago?
I will do my best, Mr. Mayor. This request for appropriation is necessary to address the aging and increasingly unreliable network and security infrastructure currently in place at the theater. The work involves replacing outdated network cabling, installing new fiber optic lines, and upgrading the network equipment. With the goal of bringing the theater's technology infrastructure up to modern standards, improve performance and reliability, this investment will also reduce the risk of service interruptions during events, and to ensure that building operations remain stable and secure, essential for the safety and experience of the operators. There is a motion and a resolution of appropriation for $110,000 that will be out of the general fund reserve.
Thank you, well done.
Take two seconds.
Are there any callers or cards?
Here, I don't have, here, I don't have any callers, but I do have one card for this item, it's Beth Brooks. Beth?
I mean, I know that by the time, you know, a request for funding comes to you, that, you know, it's important, I know that everybody, you know, updating infrastructure, roofs, all these things are important and should be done, and if you put it off, it only costs more. But I see the same thing here that I see all the time, there's a contract not to exceed the amount, but you always exceed the amount. You know, I don't even know why that's ever put in, you know, into the agenda. We're going to have a contract not to exceed this amount, but we ask for $45,000 more. So, I mean, it just seems that there's always more added to what this, this is going to be a new contract that you added $45,000 to, but there was a contract before that that apparently, I'm assuming, was not supposed to be added to. So there is that issue, and the $110,000 coming out of the general fund, that is, doesn't thrill me, given the fact that you did pass the budget, you did make a lot of cuts, you did conduct a poll of, of, you know, constituents. They didn't ask for an upgrade to the Alex Theater, they didn't ask for these things, you haven't addressed the concerns from that poll to make priorities each week for the budget. Instead, I come, you know, every week and I'm looking at these things that don't seem to be priorities, at least not as far as... to be priorities, at least not as far as what came out of the poll. So it's very frustrating to see these agenda items, to say, let's have $100,000 here and let's have $100,000 there, when you do have a poll from the public that asked for help, financial help, for different programs, and I don't see that happening. So that's why I'm here speaking on this item, because I think that, you know, it's very frustrating to see these things. I don't see why this is a priority at this state, especially since, you know, every week, it seems to be that there's not another city council meeting. I understand it's the summer, but, you know, there's a lot of vacation being taken, or whatever the story is, and those council meetings are not being made up. So it's very frustrating to go week after week and see what you're spending money on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
I'll second you.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Asadurian?
Yes.
Brotman? Garpetian? Kusakian?
Yes.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is 10, Hearings Fire Department Regarding Public Hearing for Weed Abatement Charges for Fiscal Year 2024, 2025. One, resolution confirming weed abatement charges.
This is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing and go to Mr. Galanian.
We're not timing this one.
Mr. Mayor, Member of City Council, the fire department annually inspects 8,904 parcels within the very high fire hazard area, of which 666 are unimproved vacant properties. The city has an agreement with the L.A. County Agricultural Commissioner for weed abatement services on those unimproved properties. On March 18, and following a public hearing on April 15, the city council approved the declaration list of the vacant properties that pose a public hazard and allows the agricultural commissioner to abate the hazards. The commissioner recovers the cost of abatement through assessments of property taxes. This report also includes the cost of the abatement on all those properties inspected by the commissioner that needs approval by council before forwarding to the county auditor. Chief Brooks and staff from the fire department are available if you have any questions.
Yes, Councilmember Asadurian?
I'm just gonna, I mentioned this during the staff briefing, but I think my bigger concern here is the impact on households and their insurance, as well as what kind of education we're going to be doing out to the community about what these changes mean. And the chief has noted that there is a plan being put together, there is a plan together, and I look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just add that I know that part of our process in the city, the way the city operates, is we encourage compliance. We want property owners to maintain these properties themselves, and given what we're seeing with fluctuations in temperatures and longer periods of triple-digit heat and hotter days, it's important that we don't allow properties to fall into a state where they may pose a hazard to neighboring properties or just to the city in general. You know, it's not necessarily the best thing to raise, no one sits up here and says, you know, I want to be the one raising fees or charges, but this is something that's for the overall welfare of the city and to keep the community safe, and it's important that we see this through. So happy to make the motion for the resolution once the hearing is closed.
But first, if I may add, if you're a homeowner and you do receive a notice for weed abatement, please don't ignore it, because you will be followed up on, and if the work is not done, the county will perform the work, not necessarily at the most reasonable price, but with contractors that are well-established, and that will be a certainty to get the job done right. Our GYA does perform this service. You can contact them through the city, so don't ignore it. You'll get a hefty, hefty bill, and as my colleagues have said, you will be adding to the danger of the wildfire season, if it is a season anymore, in our community. You may, I'm ready for your motion, Mr.?
Oh, there you go. Do we have someone speaking?
Is there a card?
There are no cards for this item, no more callers.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Asadurian?
Yes.
Brotman? Garpetian? Kusakian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Next item.
10B, Community Development, Regarding Public Hearing for Applications for Mills Act Contracts for Contributing Properties in Historic Districts, 324 Loss in Place and 1833 Neodora Drive. One, resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a Mills Act Historical Property Contract with the property owners of 324 Loss in Place. Two, motion to deny the request by the owners of 324 Loss in Place for Mills Act Historical Property Contract. Three, resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a Mills Act Historical Property Contract with the property owners of 1833 Neodora Drive. Motion to deny the request by the owners of 1833 Neodora Drive for a Mills Act Historical Property Contract.
Okay, why don't we just take a short pause before we continue? We have only three members of council, and I'm gonna permit a brief moment of respite for anyone on council that wishes to partake. Well, while we're here, I do want to address members of staff that in any way you feel that this streamlined pace of the meeting deprives you of your desire to address council, to prepare at least a week ahead, worry about it the night before, come to council, make sure you're wearing the right ensemble of tie or dress or suit. Please let me know, we can, we'll consider it, but I think, at least for the items we had today, that this process was more appropriate than bringing you up for a more formal presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Platt, please open the hearing. Mr. Galanian, do you want to tee it off, or should we just go straight to Mr. Platt?
We'll go to Mr. Platt.
Mr. Platt?
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. As you heard, we're looking at two applications for a policy that city council enacted in 2016, and it's taken us through a long process to get to the point where we're considering the Mills Act contract applications for two contributing properties in our historic districts, 324 Loss in Place and 1833 Neodora Drive. I'm gonna try to go through this as quickly as I can. There's a lot of information in the staff report, as well as the exhibits. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look that over. Just as a basis here, the Mills Act in Glendale has traditionally only been available to Glendale Register properties. It was seen as an incentive to encourage people to consider nominating their properties and protecting them through Glendale Register designation, and then encourage them to do that by giving them a property tax reduction that's built into the Mills Act process. In 2016, council looked at a proposal to extend this to district contributors and voted to move forward with that, and at that time, staff presented a fairly rudimentary outline of the basic concepts. We were very afraid that this great new tax reduction would lead to an onslaught of applications. Strangely, the two applications you're considering tonight are the only two people, or the only two property owners who filed applications or who have even exhibited much interest in the program. One thing to note here is that we did tell council from the beginning that we were establishing a competitive, or you could call it comparative process at minimum, so that you could review these, any applications that came to you based on the merits of the properties. The idea being, some properties maybe, might receive more of a benefit, that would be a public benefit than other properties. So that's the process that staff moved forward with, brought it through review with HPC, the clicker, there we go, brought it through review with HPC, and then also brought back a rough outline again to council. So that was in 2020 and 2021. The process we initially started with, the idea was to try to make this as objective as possible. We created a final score based on an equation that the different expenditures proposed by property owners and the number of points that we could assign to their projects based on a set chart that contains a list of points would be calculated to come out with a final score and a ranking system. Ultimately, the Historic Preservation Commission did not like this concept of final score, and that's been eliminated, and it's not part of your consideration tonight, but I'm just showing this as background. Our clicker's not working great, so... Where should I be pointing? Over there. There we go. For these two applications, let me make sure I didn't scale. There we go. For these two applications, HPC has held three hearings specific to these applications. Actually, it's two. In October 2022, it was the first time the commission saw the scoring system, the final score, and rather than talking about the relative merits of the two properties, kind of got bogged down in the process whether we should assign these scores to the properties, and ultimately continued the hearing so that staff could return with a better, for more discussion from the commission, so they could weigh in on what the process should be like. That hearing happened in February 2024. Some modifications were made to the process that's outlined in the staff report. Staff made those changes and then brought the item back to the commission for review in March of 2024, where the two houses were reviewed. The commission voted three to one to recommend the Mills Act contract for each of them, and as noted in the staff report, staff disagreed with that finding, which I'll talk about a little bit toward the end of the presentation. For your information, this is the point chart. There's been some confusion in the public and even at the commission level when we talk about points versus the final score. The commission never had a problem with the idea of assigning points to the work plan, and the work plan was what the applicants proposed, saying, I propose to, you know, change my air conditioning unit, I propose to change my front door, those sorts of things. And we assigned points to each of those so we could have a somewhat objective way to kind of look at these things in a comparative way. The two houses under consideration have a lot of similarities, both built in the same year, both in the same style, and you'll see the similarities continue into the numbers that we'll look at at the very end. What I wanted to do is just break this down by each property, so you can look at what was proposed for the work plan. You'll see the items that HPC agreed were appropriate for this, for a Mills Act contract. HPC did not agree with some of the items, and then staff also agreed or disagreed with some of the items, so I try to present that for your consideration. For 324 Loss in Place, the owners proposed 10 work items. One was to remove, or move, not move, remove the air conditioning unit on the roof, the condenser unit, and put in a new air conditioning system with the condenser located on the ground in the backyard. HPC thought that was appropriate, staff did not. They approved, or they proposed to bolt their foundation. HPC did not approve that, and staff did. There is an issue at the front of the house with some deteriorated brick. Staff believes that this deterioration comes from a sprinkler system that was kind of battering the wall over time with water. The applicant will share the idea that this process called rising damp may have created this issue. Staff didn't accept that explanation in Los Angeles, where that's not a major issue for us, so, but HPC accepted it, so included the brick repair as part of the approval. And kind of a related issue was to change the irrigation system, which staff does approve because ultimately, it would help prevent the water from hitting the brick in the way it was. The applicant proposed some window repair. It was a little confusing. It came down to the windows not being exactly deteriorated, but some of them were painted shut, although it's been observed over time that many of the windows, at least you can see from the street, are fully operable, upper sash and lower sash. So this is another divergence between HPC's support for this item and staff's lack of support. There's a very deteriorated garage window that you see at the right side, the right image. We agreed to that, and you can see the process here is just adding up the points as you, as HPC or staff felt that was an appropriate piece of work versus something that might not be appropriate. There was some stucco damage to the house, and the commission, reviewing the photos that were presented, didn't think that it was very extensive or worthy of a point. And then there were some deteriorated shutters that staff and HPC agreed were appropriate. Replacing the garage door is a very typical Mills Act condition for Glendale Register properties, so it made sense to extend it for the historic district contributors. And then the applicant had proposed replacing the roof. Neither HPC nor staff thought that was an appropriate work item. Moving on to 1833 Neodora, there were fewer, I think six, work items proposed, one of which was replacing the front door, which is kind of a modern-ish-looking door on a more traditional-looking ranch house. So we all felt that was an appropriate selection, and the owner proposed a door that was based on a similar door at the back of the house, which seemed like a good way to go. Excuse me. The applicant proposed some brick repair, that, looking at it, it was very minor, we didn't think that that warranted a point. There was one steel window. The house originally had steel casement windows. One of those was replaced at the front facade, and the owner originally proposed to replace just that window, but when the commission looked at the rest of the house, they noticed that almost all the other windows, the front, I'm sorry, at the back and the side facades, had also been replaced, and asked the owner to bump up the number of replacement windows in the application, and he agreed to do that, which brings the total to 11 windows. Staff made up on the spot the idea, maybe they cost $3,000 apiece, which in hindsight, I think was a low estimate. The applicant hasn't come forward with any estimates or anything, so we're still using that as a rough number that you'll see in the final assessment. Same issue with the garage door, a replacement garage door, I think, I can't remember if this is vinyl or aluminum. HPC generally likes to see wood doors on houses from this period and earlier periods. There was a sewer line issue that originally the owner thought may have been caused by the Neodora stream running under the street. GWP looked into that and could not say that it was definitely a cause for this, so neither staff nor the commission felt that was an appropriate item for this. And then there were a few other things at the end that there was no supporting evidence or information for, so we didn't award points for the six, seven, and eight items that you see here. So in conclusion, we kind of do two things. The upper part of this chart tries to give us a sense of how much property tax savings the applicants might make over the course of 10 years, just as a number that we selected, because it is a 10-year contract that runs in perpetuity, which I can explain more if you have questions. Both applicants, because the houses are kind of similar, had the similar numbers, $55,000, $56,000 as a 10-year savings. And what HPC did at its October hearing was, instead of having the scoring system that staff had proposed, proposed kind of looking at four separate items, the expense that the work the work would require, the tax savings, the approximate tax savings that the owner would achieve, the number of points for those work plan items, and then a concept that was a little more subjective, what is the public benefit of the work? And HPC's recommendation to council is to use that method to kind of evaluate whether or not you think the properties are eligible for a Mills Act. And again, you can see the numbers are very similar between the two houses. The loss in place house has a lower expenditure amount for the staff recommendation because several of the items, as I mentioned, that HPC thought were appropriate. Staff thought, for example, that the brick repair was kind of a self-inflicted issue rather than a naturally occurring issue, but that's, you know, open for debate, obviously. So, so just recapping, HPC did recommend that the two contracts be approved with a three-to-one vote, and staff has, still has concerns about whether these applications are appropriate for the program. I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Your last statement, you have, staff has concerns that these would be appropriate?
Yes.
Would you be, another way of saying is you believe that they're not appropriate for the program?
I guess I could be more blunt, yeah. It's really hard to say since we didn't know who was going to apply or what the conditions of those properties would be like. I think when we were visualizing this in the early days after council recommended that we move forward with this program, I pictured houses that had work that was going to be really visible to the public, that was really going to enhance the look of not just the property, but the block, the overall historic district, which doesn't mean that the work that's proposed by these two applicants isn't going to do that to some degree. I really believe that we should be very careful when we give a Mills Act application because we are, the city is losing a little bit of money. I think we should be glad and proud to do that for Glendale Register properties because those have proven through a process of going through HPC and city council that they're kind of the creme de la creme of the city's architecture and places that have cultural and historic and aesthetic meaning. Contributors in historic districts are nice houses in most cases. They're not necessarily individually historic, and so to make this program kind of comparable, I think, to the Glendale Register program, I think there should be a strong public benefit to, to the work being done in exchange for being granted the contract.
Okay, thank you. Questions from my colleagues?
Are, are the owners here for the properties?
Yeah, for both properties.
If I can have them?
If I may. It means public hearing, so after, if you have questions for, for staff, then they'll have the opportunity to speak as the proponents.
Then I'll permit speakers.
Well, I mean, maybe this is, maybe this is, you have the answer to this. Do you know when the properties were purchased versus when it became a historic district?
I don't, actually.
Then I'll just wait.
Okay. I think in both cases, it was before the district was designated, but I'm, you don't have to ask.
So my question is, so my understanding, partially, in regards to this program, part of, or part, part of its intent, let me just say, is that when the property owner is receiving this benefit, this reprieve from the property taxes, the understanding is those savings in part are used to maintain the property to a certain standard that preserves its aesthetic, its, you know, architectural style, et cetera, correct?
Yeah, that's the expectation.
Yeah. And in regards to the specific homes which are from what seems like an almost identical period of time, right, they're both 1955?
Right.
From, do we have similar such properties currently designated for preservation within the city from this period?
Yes, we have several mid-century, kind of modern-style houses.
But these aren't mid-century modern style, they're ranch?
No, these are ranch houses, but from the same period, but no, we don't have?
Specifically ranch from 1950?
I shouldn't say that. We have two houses that we called modern ranch that are coming to me on the top of my head. They're not like the classic post and beam, glass and wood kind of modern houses that you think of for mid-century modern. They're more traditional in style. One, one is probably similar to these, but it has kind of an East Asian influence, and it's got lots of stuff happening. It's an interesting property.
Right. In terms of historical preservation in the state, like 1955 is a period that falls into that period of things that are now considered historic?
It can, yes.
It can?
Yeah, it's.
I know that age alone is not the factor, but it is a significant factor in considering in terms of?
Yeah, in historic districts, contributors need to have been built within the period of significance. The end, the starting and ending dates of that period are different from district to district, but many of our districts have dates that extend into the 1950s, '56, '57. The idea being, some of these post-war houses were built on lots that were never developed when the neighborhood was originally subdivided and developed, and so the fact that we have minimal traditional ranch houses, sometimes even modern houses, kind of helps tell the story of how that area fully developed.
Sure, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Platt. Only homes that are situated in a historic district could apply for this Mills Act application?
Yes, unless they're eligible for the Glendale Register.
Okay. So that excludes everyone that's outside the district, no matter how nice your home is?
Most everyone, there are some that could be Glendale Register eligible.
In the rules, there was something about a cap. Council had discussed, or maybe the HPC had discussed, the assessment value cap. What is that cap?
For single-family houses, it's 1.5 million, and for commercial and other property types, it's 3 million.
Okay, 1.5. And that doesn't mean the value, because I think these homes are probably close to $2 million, if I were to do a ballpark.
Yeah, it's the assessed value from the assessor's office, which is pretty much always lower than the market value.
So what if those homes are sold? The assessed value will then meet the market, hook up with the market value. Does that mean that the Mills Act ceases?
No, the Mills Act runs in perpetuity, so when a property is sold, the new owner often will receive a higher percentage tax break than the previous owner because it's being reassessed at the current market value.
So one of the things that we, I guess that we, you told us in 10 years, it's taken about 10 years for this to come forward for two, two applications so far. In terms of staff time, do you think this is a, a good use of staff time?
No, it's, it's been an incredible amount of staff time going into this, and with only two applications still in front of us, we, we've even tried, you know, last year, I believe the commission all received copies of our Living in a, Living with Histor, sorry, Living with History, our historic district pamphlet that was distributed to every property owner and resident in our historic districts, which has a little section that talks about Mills Act for contributors. Not a peep from anyone about that. When, we've had a few houses that applied for Glendale Register status in districts that the commission didn't feel were quite there, and so we've talked to those applicants about possibly looking into the Mills Act contributor program. They haven't bitten at that, and so I, I don't want to say that there's no one out there who would be interested in this, but I believe the Historical Society has also tried to do some outreach, and I'm not sure that the program is, is working the way council probably had hoped in 2016. One thing I could say is in 2016, part of the proposal that came from the Historical Society and that staff supported was the idea of having the Mills Act for non-contributors, with the idea that some non-contributors have had changes made to them, that make them non-contributors, that could be reversed. And to me, if we're giving a Mills Act contract and expecting a little, something for the money that we're sharing with, with property owners, that would be a much better use. I don't know how many properties are like that, but I imagine a lot of new buyers might be interested in something like that.
So how, how disappointed would you feel if at some future meeting, council decided to terminate this contributor program?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen it gaining traction, and, and I don't think it's at all worth the time that it's taken to get us to this point, certainly.
Okay, thank you for your candor. I see your boss is standing behind you, and I appreciate your frankness with the council. If there are no other questions, we'll go to cards, speakers, cards, and please go.
You want to call the, I think there's only two speakers, and one of them's an owner.
Let's hear, who are the speakers, the cards?
Mayor and council members, I have Francesca Smith and Damian Sullivan. Francesca, you have three minutes.
Okay, if Francesca's the applicant, we'll give her five. Mr. Sullivan, I don't think you're affiliated with any of the properties, are you? Okay, so you would get three, and the other homeowner, five as well, and?
He doesn't want to speak, it looks like.
Okay, she, well, no, upon your, let's let Ms. Smith go first for five minutes, and then we'll go through Mr. Sullivan, and then the other homeowner, if necessary.
Thanks so much. I have, before my five minutes starts, but I'm pretty sure I won't even use it, could I answer some of the questions that you were asking of Jay?
You're free to make any comment that you would like, whether you want to?
Well, I wanted to answer some of the questions that you had, if that's okay.
You're free to do that, but your time will be running.
Okay, well, then you may start my time. Thanks so much, good evening. My name's Francesca Smith. As you can tell by my letter that my husband and I sent, we are hoping that you will approve both Mills Acts. Both properties have been recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission, whose job it is to make this recommendation to you, as you know, to be awarded the Mills Act. A couple of things, you asked when we purchased the property, when it became a historic district. We purchased it in 2007, and in 2014, after four years of working with the city, thanks so much, our neighborhood became a historic district. I worked with my neighborhoods, with my neighbors. Historical resources are district contributors. You can't say it's not historic, that's untrue under the law, just a little correction there. I want to extend my sincere gratitude to Jay Platt for all the work he's done on this. He explained to me that there would be no planned absences tonight. I guess it wasn't really necessary for him to check with the clerk or anyone, it was up to him to just use his special powers. I fell last week and had a significant fall and a head injury. I asked to reschedule this because of the medical event, but I found out that there's a new policy, so special thanks to Mike Garcia for employing that new policy that we can't move the meeting forward. That's a, an interesting new policy. I just want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for all the work Jay has done on this. He has made this exceptionally complicated. I have made clear that I was the Mills Act coordinator for the city of LA for about a year. I worked closely with the assessor, I worked with all the homeowners, unless their properties weren't eligible. Working with people toward, toward receiving a tax benefit when the planner doesn't think that we should have that law is kind of preposterous. He, he has run numerous meetings, he has given lots of PowerPoint presentations, Mr. Platt has done his darndest to come up with all different systems, none of which are used by any of the other approximately 100 cities who have this program. They, they do it the way everybody else does, it's not this hard. Special thanks for just two people, for just the three of you being here, I really appreciate you guys being here when others, others aren't. Jay, Jay's expediency in coming up with the application form, which I think was more than six years, should really be applauded, I'm sure that must have taken so much time, so really, thank you. Having a different form is not used by other cities. I checked with, I think I have about, maybe 20 in Los Angeles County, I only know of two in Orange County, the last time I checked. I want, not including letters of support was, was a new twist, that was great, thank you for not including the letters of support for our?
They were distributed.
It's okay, no, yes.
Sorry, sorry that we didn't get them, so we weren't aware of that. It was, you've set a new threshold, really, for excellence in this case. It's been nine years since the Mills Act for contributors was adopted by, by city council. Staff doesn't make these decisions. I recognize absolutely that staff advises you, staff advises the commission. The fact that staff includes their own opinion on this case as though it held equal weight to that of the commission is just, it's a really new way of looking at things, so extra thanks, Mr. Platt. When, when, when the Historic Preservation Commission?
Please, please address the council.
I apologize. The Historic Preservation Commission, whose job it is to make this recommendation, who made a clear recommendation to you, is overridden by staff, and staff gives a presentation from their standpoint. You really should just call this maybe a special Mills Act, when the person doesn't understand that maintenance is included, the guy who wrote the law, the county assessor, and the California Office of Historic Preservation all include maintenance, it's an essential part of a Mills Act. So I just want to thank you all, keep doing what you're doing, Mr. Platt. Soon we'll have no, no historic district contributors. If it were extended to non-contributors, those are not historic properties, so it doesn't comply with the law. I can help you out, I'd be happy to answer questions, and I want to thank you. I don't mean to be sarcastic, but this has been a horrible process, and I think we're actually going to leave Glendale like so many of our friends have, and I'm disappointed by this. Any questions?
So you're asking for the Mills Act, but you're telling us that you're going to be leaving Glendale afterwards?
Well, we're asking for a Mills Act because we'd like to stay. If, if based on these injustices and this strange interpretation of it, the city no longer has this, we, we bought a house in an area that we, that I thought was a historic district. I worked on making that a historic district, I spent hundreds of hours on that.
So, yes, council member, I said three.
Did you purchase the house before it became a historic district?
Absolutely.
And then you worked on the?
Yes, I'm an architectural historian, as you know, yeah, it's my profession.
And then you, you worked on making that district historic?
Yes, ma'am.
And then did you advocate for this policy?
I did not. I did not. The Glendale Historical Society did quite a bit, it was in their newsletters, and it's not their job to advertise it.
No, 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 I'm not advertised, but advocate for.
I wasn't saying that to you, I apologize.
Well, we certainly don't want you to leave the city, Ms. Smith.
I would prefer not to.
But, the way you put it is unusual. Mr. Kazakhin, any questions?
Um.
Of the applicant?
Not at the moment, I mean.
Okay, thank you very much. Next.
I appreciate all of your time, and I appreciate you all looking at the Mills Act for Historic District contributors, which is your ordinance now.
Damian Sullivan is next. Damian, you have three minutes.
Hello, council. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. I apologize for coming in my Muhammad Ali shirt, I just kind of decided at the last minute to come by because I thought it was, it was important to, to support something that I think is important, which is to care about the city and the people that contribute to the city. I'm here to advocate for the passing of the, the Mills Act provision for both of these properties because I really believe that we owe a debt to the people who like Francesca. If there's anybody who is, it would be absurd to think is gaming the system for a few mere thousand dollars, it would be Francesca Smith, who literally is responsible for probably more historic preservation value volunteer work. If she billed you for a penny an hour, for all of the millions of hours that she put in caring about this city, caring about what makes this city beautiful aesthetically, makes it attractive, makes it something that advertises itself to the world to come live here, you would owe her a lot more than what this, I would call a pittance of Mills Act money is. It's a debt that we can't repay her, and she's not here, nor do I believe the other property. repay her. And she's not here, nor do I believe the other property owner is trying to pull something off. We're talking about, I mean, I drive every day by, I don't know if it's 27, what the amount for the Fremont Park makeover is, that in my opinion, that park didn't need to be made over, it was a gorgeous park, and we threw away playgrounds and things, and spent millions and millions. These are people that spend their money, they spend their time, they advocate for keeping historic neighborhoods historic, and they do the work. They actually, they fix the properties, they maintain the properties, they follow the rules. They're the contributors, and some of the people in the historic districts are not following rules, they're not contributors. You're talking about somebody who is trying to do something good for the city. They're asking for some, what the Mills Act provides, and maintenance is something that, you know, I think it's been said very eloquently that there are, you know, 100 other cities that do it differently. I think that there's a lot of things in this city that we can learn from other, I've heard already talk about having Pasadena and beyond on certain occasions. We can learn a lot from other cities that do things in streamlined ways, that don't fight their citizens who are the good citizens. I mean, there are so many people who don't come to these meetings because they are jaded and they are cynical, but you see the same 15, 20 or so people here all the time because they're the people who care. And if you punish and ignore and don't award the people who care with the things that they are doing for us, then that loss of them is on us. And she, it was a figure of speech, she's not going to move out of Glendale because of this, she's just saying, "I'm one of the good ones." Thank you.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Edward Silver.
And you're the property owner, correct, sir, from Neodrara? You have five minutes.
So, yeah, you asked about the date. We bought our house in 2006, and a few weeks later, the Neodrara Historic District signs went up like half a block from us. And we fell in love with the house because it was amazingly charming, the neighborhood is phenomenal. But it was a head-scratcher to me why we're a historic district until two doors up, I forgot her name, the woman.
Yurka, Kathy Yurka.
Yeah, she lived two doors up, and I asked her, "Hey, what is this?" And she goes, "Oh, it's the, the variety of houses," because this old neighborhood back in 1905 or 1902 was, kept going out of business, bankrupt, and then new people would boot in and do new houses, all custom houses, all done by custom architects, but different times over many, many years. I go, "Well, I guess that kind of makes sense. So, my 1955 custom ranch house is somewhat historic because it fits into the context of the neighborhood. I get it. Okay, I'm going to call and see if I can get the Mills Act," because I had heard about it. And a week later, or two weeks later, I contacted Jay, and since then, for whatever, eight years even, kind of worked on this. So, our attitude is, we love the house, we love the neighborhood, we think it's important that this is historic. And my wife and I, this $50,000, $60,000, that is a fraction of what we're spending on this house. We're spending hundreds of thousands on this house. Where, everything we're talking, the door, everything, that was stuff we were going to do anyways. We actually wanted to replace the door years ago, but we've been putting it off because we were worried it was going to kick us out of the Mills Act application. So, our plan is to do that, replace the windows, anything we can do to make this house look like it looked in 1955, because it, we love it. It's our final house, we're both retired, and we have no intention of going anywhere. So, it makes sense that we're here, it makes sense that we applied, and I don't know if I totally agree, but I do agree that maybe this is too broad of a, of a ordinance, you said, but I still do think that we apply, we do apply to it. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, I have a question. So, one of our, we learned there's only two homes that have applied. How did you-
Well, we were one.
How did you hear about it?
I didn't. I knew about it. I said, when the sign went up-
How did you learn about-
I don't know, I'm a structural engineer, I'm in the industry, so over the years, I just heard about it.
Okay.
So, my clients, you know, if they ever got involved in something with historic districts, it just came to me. So, I just knew it when it happened. I go, "Hey, I know there's, I know there's a thing, I think it's called the Mills Act. I'm going to call and just see if it applies." And it did.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, there was nothing, I mean, if I can hopefully save a little bit of money, great. If not, we're still staying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have no more cards?
No more cards, okay. Council member Asadryan?
Just have comments.
I think we can make comments now.
So, I obviously wasn't on council when this program developed. The reason that I asked when you bought the house versus when it became a historic district, I think I've spoken about this time and again when we've talked about historic districts. My biggest concern has been individuals that purchase a home, and then that home becomes historic after their purchase, and they didn't agree to it. And I've spoken a lot about families who put their life savings into the down payment of that house. Can be four people doing that, and the bank still owns that home, only to learn that the expenses that come with a home, that is now a contributor or historic home, which it wasn't at the time of their purchase, putting them in a spot where they either have to figure out, they want to sell the property and leave, which makes things even more difficult if you have been saving up for, you know, the last 10 years to be able to change your windows and doors. And so, I, I do think that this program is broad. I do think that if we are going to have any program, it should be serving individuals and families and residents that are in a historic district, but also have financial issues that preclude them from making the renovations, because I've spoken about this, and now you having gone through the process of even changing the windows and so forth, recognizing how much more expensive it is to do that with a historic home versus a regular home. And so, I brought up the issue of us and our revenues and the lack thereof during the last council meeting when we had the Mills Act. You know, I, I don't think that it should be granted to individuals that can afford to do it. I obviously wasn't part of council when you guys made this decision. If you have any insights, Mr. Najarian, as to why this program is this way, and it is kind of weird that this took like eight years to go, not a little weird, but quite weird for it to come, for it to take that long. But, I think with both of those properties, I'm of the mindset that a program needs to, at the very least, identify financial need. And if we're going to lose revenue, you know, I'd rather take this money and create programs that are helping our families that are having a hard time putting a roof over their head and unable to pay their utility bills. So, that's kind of where I am on both.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian?
Sure, thank you. So, I, I think I, I believe I have a different view than my colleague expressed in terms of what neighborhood character and a term that's oftentimes used, maybe it's referenced when you look at these studies as to historical preservation and historical designations of neighborhoods, this idea or this term charm, you know, the neighborhood charm. People look for homes in Glendale for a number of reasons. Some of it is the public school system, some of it is public safety and city services, but a significant portion of it is also the charm of our neighborhoods, right? What they feel like, what they look like, what they evoke in us when we drive through these streets. And part of that is related to what the homes, the aesthetic of the homes, as you go through these various neighborhoods. Too often, we take things for granted, and a lot of charming homes and structures are lost over time, because in, in our state, it appears to me, and I think some of the people watching and here in the chambers would agree, that, you know, one of the biggest economic driving forces in our state is real estate. You know, we have great weather, it's a place everyone wants to live, people want to buy properties, they want to build on them, they want to build their dreams, dream homes, and certainly a number of folks have done that over the years. And once everything comes together in a place, you have these charming neighborhoods in various parts of the city that I believe are worth saving, worth working towards preserving. And there aren't a lot of tools, I mean, we talk about what it costs to maintain a property in the state that it was found. These homes are newer than the home that I live in with my family, but, you know, when you look at, you know, putting up a wood garage door versus what you can get from one of the big box home improvement retailers, wood doors for garages are not inexpensive, they are very costly. You talk about taking an air conditioning unit and putting it on the ground, you're already talking about a $20,000 to $30,000 expense just to do that, and looking at how to reduct it, and looking at, you know, it is a significant undertaking. So, when I look at what the cost savings are here on this chart in terms of the taxes, and we look at what the homeowners are offering to do and to maintain over their lifetime of owning these properties and these properties existing, sure, I mean, you know, I've had people comment and say, "Well, you know, what's so unique about these properties?" Perhaps not much now, because you see a lot of similar-looking properties around the city, but as more time goes by and a lot of these properties are purchased, remodeled, changed, added on to, you're going to have less and less of these specific period pieces, which is why I asked Mr. Platt about, you know, what do we have right now currently in this category? And you mentioned, from the time period, we have other homes, but not ones that specifically meet this aesthetic. And again, it may look very plain, it may look common, I don't mean that in an offensive way, right? 1950s, great area for this country in some respects, maybe not so much in others, but it does encapsulate and capture a period in time, as you mentioned, sir, about how that neighborhood was developing. Is it a revenue loss?
Sure.
It may be, but is it worth it? Yes, and the reason I believe that is because when you talk about the benefit, a lot of our revenue comes from property taxes. Property taxes go up when the value of a property goes up, and the value of a property goes up when the charm of a neighborhood is preserved, when the character of a neighborhood is preserved. And as we're seeing right now, from the state legislature, as there is a constant push to build, 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 and build more, it is incumbent upon us as council representatives, as members of this community, as people who have chosen to make our, Glendale our home and live with our neighbors, to preserve certain characteristics of it. I don't see this as, you know, maybe the process can be improved. There's certainly things that we can do, but I think when you have people who voluntarily come forward and are saying, "We are willing to do what it takes to maintain these homes with a certain character and style, and put the investment of time to make sure that they are preserved in the way that they were intended," I want to support that. And again, it's their choice, they applied, they went through this process. I want to grant them, grant them that opportunity. Doesn't mean we're going to have a run on the city for all these folks to slash our, our revenues for it. And this also went through the commission process, and the majority of the Historic Preservation Commission has agreed that it also meets those criterias if they make the changes that have been recommended. So, I would support it. I think it's maybe warrants for us to revisit and look at this whole process, but again, I think there is something to be said about looking for ways to preserve things while we still can before it is too late. There's a lot of places, I mean, we've been on this council, and something has come before us, and, you know, we haven't been able to turn back the clock to preserve it when we could have. We have individuals living in this community who want to do that. I'm happy to support them in that effort.
Thank you. So, I did vote for this back in 2016. It's not really what I intended, and perhaps speaking for the rest of council, what we envisioned. We envisioned that there would be a significant amount of homes where we could pick the two very best examples of contributors who, whose owners desire to use the Mills Act savings to upgrade the home to the former glory. This is not, this is not what I expected. I'm not happy that we have spent years and years of staff time trying to develop this program. That is a cost to the city. I'm cognizant of, oh, let me be fair to everybody, let me start my time, too. We have timers. I'm very cognizant of Mr. Platt's opinion, and perhaps that of the CDD Department, that this program just isn't working, and that they would not be upset if it were to be terminated. That, coming from Mr. Platt, who I know has a, a very strong desire to maintain the very best historic properties in Glendale, that's quite, quite an admission on his part. I, I see a lot of unfairness in the current program that I didn't see back in 2016. I don't see any economic fairness. Those people who have the applicants, or any further applicants, are living in homes that are close to $2 million. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I bet they're close, if not even higher. And they're getting a significant savings on taxes that each and every other homeowner in the city must pay, and at the same time, maintain their house. I've got a very nondescript house, and, you know, in the last year, last two years, I've put probably about $200,000 into just upkeep. I don't believe that there's geographic fairness, because no one from South Glendale, none of the homeowners in South Glendale are allowed to avail themselves of this process. It's only those in the districts. There's maybe one district south, the Cottage, Cottage District, but the vast majority of other homeowners are excluded from this. I don't find that fair. I, I realize that being in a historic district, you have certain responsibilities, in any event, in terms of what you can do to your house. Anything done visible from the street needs to get permits, is that correct, Mr. Platt?
Permits or approval?
Approval from the HPC. So, it's not like these homes are on the verge of being wiped out and put a, you know, neo-modern design on there, that these homes are pretty much going to have to maintain the way they are. So, I'm not in favor of awarding the Mills Act for these homes. They're nice homes, clearly, but there's nothing special. They're, they're, if I can say, unremarkable. Clean, well-kept, but nothing unusual. So, I do not feel that they do warrant the Mills Act protections at this point. Would someone like to make a motion, or a series of motions?
I, I would make the motion to grant both properties their Mills Act.
So, that's one. You're moving one and three?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager enter into loss in place in Neodrara.
All right, then I'll-
So, is there a second?
I'll make a subsequent motion.
Well, this would die for a lack of a second.
Oh, okay, all right.
Is there any other motion to be made?
What numbers are there?
So, a denial is two and four.
I'll move two and four.
I will pass the gavel, second that. I'll close the public hearing and ask for roll call.
Council member Asadryan?
Yes.
Brotman, Garpetian, Kasakian?
No.
And Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor, I would like, perhaps, to use this time to also request that maybe we take a look at this program and revisit it. It's been a long time, and I think this is the first time we're hearing about it, or at least I'm hearing about it, but for, whether it's the application process taking eight years, or what the qualifications would be for such a program, I think it's worth visiting again.
I wouldn't object to that. Let's put that on new business for next week. Is that the proper procedure, Mr.?
Correct.
To, to agendize it for further discussion?
The one thing I do want to mention, and I don't want to belabor this point because I want to respect this body's decision and move on from it, but, you know, by the decision that we made on a two to one out of a five-person council, you know, we, it, ultimately, this decision is made, you know, with two out of five council members- decision is made, you know, with two out of five council members making that decision. It's hard for us to determine what would have happened if we had a full council. Again, the rules are the rules, the chips fall where they will, but I think it would have been, I think, it would have been good for us to consider, and just for us to consider, perhaps, moving this to date certain when we do have a full council, given that there's a lot of interest and discussion about this, given that people have invested so many years of their time and effort to this process. I don't know if there's interest to reconsider that. If there is, I would support it, but if not, then we can move on.
Was there a request from either one of the council members? That's not present, to move this item for them to be present?
No council member, Sophia.
Sorry?
No, in fact, quite the opposite. Mr. Garpetian, who had a family emergency, specifically urged us to go forward with this item. And I believe Mr. Brotman has, would have a conflict on one of the properties in any...
On the Neodra properties, yes.
On the Neodra. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is item number 13, Discussion of Councilmember's Future Agenda Request, A Request for Councilmember Asadrian to Discuss a Report by Staff on Planning for Upcoming World Cup and Olympics Events.
So I'm, I'm not just looking for a report, I'm looking for a council discussion on those two big events coming up, what we can do, what are the opportunities that are available. I also spoke briefly to our city manager about this in wanting to maybe create an ad hoc committee that includes some, we have some large companies that are here, and how we can really use the upcoming events to put Glendale on the map and make sure that our local businesses, our community is actually part of the festivities that will be coming to the region.
It's a good idea. I second it. Is that all we need, or do we need three?
One more.
Motion and vote.
Okay, so...
You can take Councilor Sotran's statement as a motion.
As a motion. I'll second. Roll call.
Councilmember Asadrian?
Yes.
Brotman, Garpetian, Kasakian?
Yes.
And Mayor Nijorian?
Yes.
And I will take this opportunity to say, I saw the initial Glendale deck that staff had put together, and it looks great. So thank you for that.
Next item, please.
Next item is item B, Request for Councilmember Garpetian to Discuss Unfunded State Mandates.
Well, Mr. Garpetian is not here, however, I think we need a little more detail in what he's requesting, which...
Put this item over.
Which we don't have. I would generally support it, but he may want to narrow in on certain types of unfunded mandates.
We would like that.
So let's, let's put, with no objection, let's put this over until he's present to vocalize the issues. Next item, please.
Item number 14 is Oral Communications. Discussion is, is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, I do have three cards and one caller on the line.
Let's start with the cards.
Beth Brooks. Beth, you have five minutes.
Thank you. My first comment is, does the charter have anything about the mandatory number of council meetings there should be every year? Because it seems to be a couple of weeks where you're only doing two a month. So I'm wondering, wouldn't it be great to have in the charter, you know, you have to at least do, you know, you know, I don't know, 50 or 45 or 48 council meetings per year? I think that would be great if you don't have that, because I think that there are a lot of issues that need to be addressed, and they're not if you're just doing two meetings a month. Again, to sort of repeat my, you know, concern about the budget, that since the budget was passed, you know, you know, I feel like we've been waiting for the council to prioritize what the data showed you from the city's poll of what the public is prioritizing, which I don't see happening at all. Because at least I know that rental assistance for seniors was in the top two, but so far I haven't seen anything even discussed. Or the top, oh, there, she knows better than me. You're right. See? So my question, in a way, is like, who decides the agenda? Who decides what you're going to be spending, you know, who decides what's going to be on the agenda? Is it the city manager who decides? Do they have input from the city council? Because I don't see a rhyme or reason. I like to sort of have pattern recognition, and I like, you know, things to be, to make sense, and, you know, I wrote a lot of essays in college 50 years ago, but, you know, that there's a theme. And I don't see the, the theme. It doesn't make sense to me when I come into council or I see the agenda, like, they seem to come out of left field, that you're funding this and maybe that, and the Alex Theater, and a roof, and I don't see anything coming out from the poll, because I was told that $10 million was taken out of pavement repair. I don't know if that was sidewalk or just pavement. So when I see things like, you know, $800,000 here for, for this, and, you know, another $100,000 here for this, I don't, I, it doesn't make sense to me why you would have taken that out and updated, let's say, buildings. Because I think, even when you were talking about the weed abatement, I'm telling you, in my neighborhood, and I just live, I live in Lexington and Kenwood, I live right around here, weeds everywhere. I feel there's a slight deterioration in the neighborhoods as far as, you know, once, and it's like the broken windows theory of crime. You know, once your neighborhood deterior, you know, if you have broken windows, that can sort of lead to more crime because your neighborhood is deteriorating, and then people careless because they see it deteriorating. So I think, you know, broken sidewalks, or I'm seeing a lot of broken sidewalks, people not taking care of their lawns, that is something. I think that your priority has to be the people. And you do have the results of that poll, and the people did speak. So I know you're trying to save money by doing certain projects, you know, now so that you don't have to pay more, more money later, but I think that that's, that's a concern for me. I think that there needs to be something that the public sees that you're setting priorities. Even you could have a council meeting, you know, like, you have a theme. I don't know. Like, this week, we're doing infrastructure, and next council meeting, we're doing, you know, public service, and the next council, again, my head, you know, wants to go to pattern recognition, that that would also help people to know what's coming up at that meeting, and it might even help you to actually look into the different programs and say, you know what, let's talk about building repair at this council meeting, unless something urgent slips in, you know, that you absolutely have to address. And then my other mention to you is that there is something called that Community Academy, where they're going to have a certain number of people come in and learn how the city works, how the government works, how the council works, you know, which is so brilliant, and that you had one last year, and that there were so many people on the waiting list, and you waited a whole year to have another one as opposed to filming it. You know, I think you should actually film this academy and include it on the website. So even if people are not using handbooks, which I don't think, you know, is necessarily that you have to, and they see the questions asked, and they get the questions answered, or I don't know how much it costs to do this, but I think you might as well memorialize it, you know, and then people could just access it because maybe they won't, you know, if there are so many people on the waiting list to get here. And my last issue is that I did learn that Mr. Brotman has a newsletter, like, from a private account that he sends to people, and it explains the budget, and I would wish that that would be somewhere that was, would be done for all the public, for everybody, and maybe be even on the website. I think we all need to know what's going on. Thank you.
So the Community Academy is Mr. Kasakian's brainchild.
It's brilliant.
Is there a fee? Is there a...
No, no, there's no fee.
I think he'd be an excellent, excellent candidate.
Oh, I applied. I applied it. If I don't get in, you're going to hear me, like, every week, you know, complaining about this and my loudest New York accents, you know?
All right, let's expedite that.
Crying, screaming, all the things I'm sort of famous for, yeah. So I'm, I'm, you know, but really, I think you should memorialize it.
Ms. Brooks, I think we do have a date for the rental subsidy program that's supposed to be coming.
Yes, Councilwoman Sotran, I believe it's on August 19th, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Vasken Vardanyan. Vasken? Vasken Vardanyan?
Okay, let's move on to the next speaker.
The last, the last person who gave in, submitted a card is Andranik Tatunyan, and I do have a caller on this, on this item, too.
Okay, so, ten minutes.
Hello, my name is Andranik Tatunyan, and I live in the newly-built building in Glendale. When we first moved into that building, they gave us the paperwork which said that they would raise the rent from between 3% to 5%. Which is about $40 to $60. But now it's from $100 to $140. About 60 people signed that so that the rents will go back to where they used to be. And now we're asking you to do something so things will be like they used to be before? I'm not by myself. There are about 15 people who came with me. So they will join me in complaining about raising the rent. We're here to, we're here to say, state that we cannot afford it because all of us are pensioners, and the rent is more than the pension that we're receiving. Thank you very much. If you can do something, we'd appreciate it. It's only been from six to seven months since we've moved there, and they claim that they, they will raise the rent after a year, but it hasn't even been a year. Thank you very much.
Is this about Harrods Village?
It's, yeah, it's either of those two affordable senior housing properties on Broadway, I assume.
From my understanding, they, their notice said 3% to 5%, but there's an increase now?
We'll have to look into it. I'm not sure what they're referring to.
If we can have staff actually just get it, and then it would be helpful for all of us as council to get it.
I've received messages from individuals living in that building, and I believe I forwarded it to Mr. Zovak, and you may want to check your email again, Mr. Galanian. I think it was before I left town, I had brought it to people's attention.
Okay.
I haven't gone, again, I'm going through two weeks of emails, so I haven't seen if staff responded to me, but this is an issue that has come up.
Next speaker, please. Or phone call.
Romella, you have five minutes. Go ahead, Romella.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Yes, this, this, I was talking about nine other these Broadway, Citrus Crossing Apartments, and yes, I'm trying to support, support these people. This is a grassroots movement from this, from the tenants of this apartment, and yeah, this outrageous, I'm calling to protest this, is like $140 rent increase, and this is, this is affordable housing that cities bragging for years. And they came up with this, and now this, the landlords came up with this $140 rent increase, and, yeah, I mean, this is really the grassroots movement. Now you're going to face grassroots movements, more grassroots movement in the city of Glendale. And, yeah, obviously, I couldn't be there to support, so, so I, I read the call. Hopefully, we can, we can stop, we can stop this outrageous rent increase. Yeah, most probably I'm going to be there next week, so we're going to talk, yeah, so, okay, if you want to face this, 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 this crisis, then you're better not show. Yeah, that's it. We're sorry, let's add a letter to the forum, Andranik. Okay, thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you.
Mayor, there are no many, no more callers.
No more callers. Very good. I think that concludes the business of this council. We have a motion.
I will second.
Second. We are adjourned.
Thank you.